I call to order the May 26, 2015, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone joining us today here in the council chamber, as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Community Media Services. We are happy to have citizens participate in their city government in any way, so welcome to all. At this time, I will ask the clerk to take the roll call.
Pansky, here.
Steponik.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Tower. Or Tower, I'm sorry, Cummings.
Here.
Six, sorry about that.
And Mr. Peck will not be here this evening. At this time, I would ask Councillor Pansky to do the implication and the pledge of allegiance. Our students come forward.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank our students. Mallory Lloyd. Outside student. Mallory, correct? What do you plan to do with that summer vacation is almost here, two weeks away?
What are your plans for summer?
To swim at the YMCA.
Jackson? Madison, I'm sorry. What are your plans?
Go to Missouri and go kayaking around the Apostle Islands.
All right. I'll give our students a hand. Now you're free to go home and study, or play outside. Next, I will read a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month, reflecting with Shirley Maddox with the Landmarks Commission. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as a Historic Preservation Month in 1973, as a way to promote historic places, and whereas the Wisconsin Historical Society recognizes May as Historic Preservation Month, and sponsors events around Wisconsin to instill awareness and promote the state's historic assets, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism promotion, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining overall community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation has been shown as an excellent way to create jobs, stabilize property values, and preserve our existing housing stock, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible assets of heritage and the culture that shaped us as people. And now therefore, I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as the City of Oshkosh Historic Preservation Month, and encourage the preservation of Oshkosh's historic properties, and call upon the people of Oshkosh to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in the special observation dated May 20, 2015. Shirley?
I'm pleased to accept this on behalf of the Landmarks Commission, and I'd like to commend our mayor for being very supportive of all that he read today. Our neighborhoods, our history, our old buildings deserve our love and attention, and this month we try to pay attention to what we have done. That's good. Thank you, Mayor.
In during May, we also do campus awards to those deserving individuals in the community for what they have done with historic preservation. So Shirley Maddox and Paul Arnold will make the presentations. First, you have a PowerPoint for us?
We do.
Thank you.
The goal of the campus awards is to further preservation by identifying and protecting the city's cultural resources by calling attention to the cultural, economic, social, and historic heritage of our city. Since 1981, the Oshkosh Landmarks Commission has awarded 102 campus awards to individuals, property owners, and organizations that have been involved in activities that enhance our historic and cultural awareness. We are honored to present four more campus awards in 2015. The first award is to William and Laura Scott at 2223 Doty Street. The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission recognizes William and Laura Scott with the 2015 Campus Award for Maintenance Efforts Including Appropriate Siding Replacement and Painting of the Exterior That Enhance Oshkosh History and Protect Our Cultural Resources. This craftsman bungalow was built about 1925. It is a craftsman-style house with horizontal clapboard siding. Some of the architectural features are the characteristic exposed rafter tails, triangular knee brackets on the end gables, wide window casings, and a pergola at the front of the house beside the porch. William and Laura Scott re-sided the west and south sides of their house using new wooden clapboards to match the existing horizontal siding rather than using vinyl or aluminum siding. They also rebuilt the wood pergola structure, which was beginning to rot. If you look at this house, it is a very credible 1925 bungalow. It's all there. Now, this home was built for Dr. Arthur Henri Broach and his second wife, Elsie, who was a stenographer for the city. Dr. Broach was born in Milwaukee in 1875. He graduated with honors from Milwaukee Medical College. In 1909, the Oshkosh City Council elected Dr. Broach as City Health Officer. He served the city in this role until about 1926, which included the Spanish Flu epidemic of 1918. He died in 1927. His widow sold the house to Paul and Myrtle Vilbock in June of '28. Paul Vilbock worked at Oshkosh Motor Truck Company as a foreman, retiring about 1965, and they lived at their 2223 Doty Street House until their deaths just months apart in 1984. This property was sold to William and Laura Scott in March of 1985, so within a period of 90 years, you have three careful, loving owners. The Landmarks Commission, in recognizing this maintenance project, acknowledges the value of old-growth timber used in this and so many other Oshkosh homes. The Scots' decision to save the good clapboard siding and replace the damaged siding with new wooden siding has preserved the integrity of this lovely bungalow. They also serve as an example for Oshkosh owners of wooden buildings. Their home adds to the pride of their place in their Doty Street neighborhood.
And the Scots are here to accept the award. Will they come forward, please?
Would you accept?
David Buck will be accepting.
The next couple to be recognized are Grady and Kimber Bowlington. The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission recognizes Grady and Kimberly Bowlington with the Campus Award for the Maintenance, Restoration, and Repair of Their Residents at 1039 Elgoma Boulevard that enhance Oshkosh history and protect our cultural resources. This modest front gable home, known as the John Bethke House, was constructed in 1869. It is a contributing structure within the Elgoma Boulevard National Historic District. In 2006, Grady and Kimberly bought the home owned by Florence Palmer, who was in her 90s. She lived in this house her whole lifetime and recently celebrated her 100th birthday at Evergreen Manor. When Grady bought the house, it was apparent from the beginning that it needed fixing up. It was inspected, but he had no idea of the cost for the restoration or what it would entail. The problem was, he didn't even know how to begin. Everything seemed unfixable since everything was out of date. Knob and tube wiring was all throughout the house. However, Grady was fortunate to connect with Terry Labe, a restoration consultant and contractor, who pointed him in the right direction all along the way as he dealt with carpenters and painters, handymen and roofers, plumbers, and electricians. The house was covered with aluminum siding that was powdering. Terry thought there may be cedar siding underneath. Taking off the aluminum siding was the key decision. Every step thereafter was decided by best practices. There were a million nails to be pulled from the old cedar siding, which was intact at most places. Grady felt humiliation for this eyesore, but not intensely. It was more important to do things well. He learned how to glaze windows and revitalize the screen and storm windows. He and Terry Labe rebuilt the front steps together, refortified the porches and the supports underneath. He spent a good amount of time on scaffolding, scraping, sanding, and putting on cedar siding. Since Grady and Kimberly's home is on an Oshkosh gateway with magnificent homes, including the Payne &amp; Sawyer Homes, now museums, thousands have daily watched a quiet lesson in patience and dedication to restoring and transforming this small house to its original condition. The Landmarks Commission acknowledges the value of old-growth timber used in this and so many other Oshkosh homes. Conserving this home is a lesson in sustainability and revitalization of your Oshkosh neighborhood. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next award is for Michael and Lois Noon. They are out of town and regret that they can't be here to accept this. The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission recognizes Michael and Lois Noon for the adaptive reuse of the former Sioux Line Oshkosh Depot to a single-family home, retaining the original character and structure and ensuring its continued use for future generations. The Sioux Line Railroad built a new station on the south side of Oshkosh in 1951. The depot, built by A.W. Juski Construction Company, was designed by the architectural firm of McErnie &amp; Kraft of Minneapolis. The first passenger train arrived on August 16, 1951. On that same day, the former Sioux Line depot that was on Bond Street, behind Main Street, and between Elgoma and Church Avenue, was officially closed. In 1996, after years of service, the Sioux Line brought an end to an era, removed the tracks, boarded up its windows, and bolted the doors. Mickey and Lois Noon purchased the boarded-up station in 1999, spending three years researching and planning before they actually started the project to create their home. They hired architect Steve Grease, who was successful with other reuse projects, including the Nina Train Depot. Many of the craftsmen who worked on the original construction returned to revitalize this building with their talents and years of experience. The Noon's intent was to retain and preserve as much of the original depot as possible. This substantial building has walls that are 18 inches thick. Only one wall was moved four feet to create a bedroom for their daughter from the men's locker room, in the process, the urinal was removed. The set of windows in the kitchen, which extend out for a clear view of the tracks, was the engineer's station used by the signalman and telegraph operator. The former ticket counter became their breakfast nook. They refinished all the original doors and reused the tiles to build the passenger bench. The spacious waiting room became their living room. In the back of the building, the baggage room was transformed into their main bedroom with the working telephone booth still tucked into a corner. They have learned to live a simple life due to limited space and limited storage space. Although the Sioux Line no longer serves this south-side station, Mickey and Lois have continued the memories of a bygone era through their careful and responsible renovation. Through this project, they have restored a public building, are taking care of it for the next generation, and helped revitalize their neighborhood.
Accepting the committee, David Buck. Thank you.
All right, the next Academy's award is for Jeremy West. The Landmarks Commission presents the 2015 Academy's Award to Jeremy West of J. West Rentals LLC for the commendable lower facade restoration completed at 570 North Main Street Building, currently occupied by the Varsity Club. The building was originally constructed in 1921 as an automobile showroom historically known as the Gibson Auto Exchange. The building is a contributing structure in Oshkosh's North Main Street Historic District, listed in 1996 on both the State and National Register of Historic Places. It is noted in the Wisconsin Historical Society's site that the very geometric ornament and parapet treatment suggests the influence of the Art Deco period. In comparison to the other car dealership buildings designed in this style, this design exhibits the greatest integration of ornament and massing. Significant alterations to the original facade have been made over the past 93 years. The most prominent changes included removal of the original glass storefront and the garage door, which were replaced by an exterior insulation and finishing system called EFAS with three small fixed windows and two modern entrances with awnings. Now, in an effort to restore the facade's appearance closer to its original state, Mr. West made a series of changes, including replacing the northern double doors with faux doors replicating the appearance of historic swing-style wood garage doors with windows, where the automobile garage service door was originally located until it was removed in 2002. It's gorgeous. And he also relocated the formal entrance to its original location on the southern portion of the facade, creating a ramped vestibule that addresses accessibility needs, and redevelopment of the center facade by removing the existing modified stucco-style panels and installing full-story clear and tinted glass more closely resembling the original showroom appearance. The Landmarks Commission thanks Mr. West for making improvements to his building that honor its history and further enhances the North Main Street Historic District, and we, the Landmarks Commission, offer our support in any future restoration efforts. Congratulations.
Thank you, Paul and Shirley, for presentations, and thank you to all the recipients.
Could I also thank David Buck for being a very supportive staff member, and Harold Buck, who helped with the photographs?
Next on our agenda is citizen statements to the council. Citizens are to address this council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh and the Common Council, may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone wanting to come forward? Next on the agenda are the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are those items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Approval of cash reports for January, February, and March and April 2015. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from May 12, 2015. Receipt of claims filed with the city's insurance company. A Devon Jones for alleged damages to faucet from water crew. Resolution 15-243, rescind personal property taxes, Little Bear Family Child Care, 1612 Western Street. Resolution 15-244, approve granting utility easement to Wisconsin Public Service adjacent to 2200 Badger Avenue east of Universal Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 15-245, accept dedication of street right-of-way to Elk Ridge Drive from West Wauka Avenue to Ruffle Grouse Way. Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 15-246, approval of initial resolution for special assessments, contract number 15-07, utility repairs and installation sanitary sewer and water relays, various locations. Resolution 15-247, award bid for Public Works Contract 15-20 to Wood Sewer and Excavating Inc. for Storm Sewer Lateral, various locations. Resolution 15-248, award bid for 24th Avenue Boat Launch Restroom Renovation for Parks Department, Keweli Brothers, and Diedrich, Inc. Resolution 15-249, award bid for Digester Painting for Wastewater Treatment Plant to Milk Coatings, Inc., and Digester Cleaning to Senegro Central, LLC. Resolution 15-250, approve change order number three for Public Works Contract number 13-08 with Myron Construction Company, Inc., for the Public Works Field Operation Facility. Resolution 15-251, approve change order number two for Public Works Contract number 13-24 with August Winter &amp; Suns, Inc., for the wastewater treatment plant control system, influent pumping, and aeration blowers upgrade. Resolution 15-252, approve engineering services agreement with ACOM Technical Services, Inc., for design of Libby Nicolay Watershed's North Main Street Area Stormwater Detention Basin. Resolution 15-253, approve lease agreement for turf utility vehicle for Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course to John Deere Financial, calendar-year 2015 lease of $9,866.64. Resolution 15-254, approval of special event. And at this point, we have a number of special events, which I will abbreviate them, but resolutions 15-254 through resolution 253 are special events for 2015. The first is a war health care foundation, Lombardi Walk to Tackle Cancer, June 6, Menominee Park and city streets. Anytime Fitness Relay for Life 5K, June 12, Oshkosh West High School Track and surrounding sidewalks. Bear Crossing LLC Greater Wisconsin Outdoor Sportsman's Festival, June 12, 13, and 14, Sunny View Expo. Oshkosh Senior Centers, Oshkosh Senior Center Night on the River, June 18, South Building and Grounds. St. Jude the Apostle Parish, St. Jude the Apostle Parish Picnic, June 19, 20, and 21, Church Grounds. Players Pizza, Peace Lutheran Church Park Dance, July 10, South Park Pavilion. Verve, a credit union, Flicks in the Sticks, August 7, South Park. Badger State Outboard, Badger State Outboard Races, September 5 and 6, Menominee Park. Downtown Oshkosh Bid, Marketing Consortium, Downtown Oshkosh Chalk Walk, September 12, Opera House Square and Market Street, and UWO and YMCA Dragon Boat Race and Festival, September 19, Elite Amphitheater in Riverside Park. The following two resolutions are 15-264 and 15-265 for block parties this summer. The first is Villa Park Drive between Deerfield Drive and Maricopa Drive, June 12, and Bent Avenue between Sheridan Street and Elgoma, August 4. Does the public have any comment on any of these resolutions?
Got a few more.
Resolution 50, thank you. Resolution 15-266, approve appointments for council to the following boards and commissions: Transit Advisory Board, Parking Utility Commission, Housing Authority, Plan Commission, Grant Opera House Advisory Board, Landmarks Commission, Traffic Review Advisory Board, Parks Advisory Board, Committee on Aging, Redevelopment Authority, Stormwater Utility Sustainability Advisory Board, Long Range Finance Committee, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, and Grant Opera House Foundation Board.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull this for separate consideration because I am going to propose an amendment.
Resolution 15-267, disallow of claim by Brett Wilkins. Resolution 15-268, disallowance of claim by Greg Polish. Resolution 15-269, approval of special Class B licenses, operator licenses, and taxicab There has been a motion to pull resolution 15-266. Is there a second?
You don't need a motion to pull.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus 15-266.
Second.
I have some questions before we hit there.
Okay.
With the motion in a second, we can have discussion.
A discussion? Discussion or questions? Questions. So can we vote first?
No, we can have discussion before the vote.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mauer, 15-248, please. It's a question I asked you earlier today. This is for the award bid for 24th Avenue Boat Launch. In the information that's provided to council, it's over budget, not a lot, but a little bit, and it talks about covering the rest of it, going through the CIP under the roofing HVAC, $10,140. Is this kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, or is there sufficient dollar amounts with the approved CIP budget that's out there already?
What we did when we bid the project, it was for mostly interior work, to get it up to ADA standards, new toilet partitions and so forth, and as an alternate, we put in a bid for the roof replacement. You recall, I think it was back in 2011, John Urban and Purchasing had a assessment done of HVAC and roofing projects. This project wore- This project was scheduled for some repairs and improvements in the next couple of years, so working with John, he felt as long as we're doing building improvements now, if we could get it checked off the list, we don't have to budget for it in a couple of years down the road. So according to John, he did have some available funding in his roofing CIP budget to help us with this project.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then I, as long as you're there. 15-253, the second time we're doing a lease for the golf course, and I just want to commend your staff and partners, and Mr. Urban. It appears that in the end, this is a very financial good decision, and I know councils made comments in the past that we have to look at things differently, and so I think this is a great way of saving some dollars and not outright buying it until after the lease is up, so I just wanted to commend you and your staff for looking at alternative ways to stretch our budget, so thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. For the consent agenda, less, resolution 15-266. Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Kerry Six.
Now to resolution 15-266. Mr. Clark?
I am currently a member of the Stormwater Utility Committee as a citizen, so I am going to make an amendment to scratch the Stormwater Utility appointment from this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? We have a motion and a second. Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Okay, we need a motion to get it up on the floor, and then we can amend it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to put 15-266 on the floor.
Second.
Now can we take the vote?
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Kerry Six.
So now, resolution, I would like to pa, make a motion to pass resolution 15-266 as amended.
Second.
Second. Is there discussion? The city clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Kerry Six.
Okay, now we're on to new ordinances. Now, the next five, well, there will be no formal action taken on these items at this meeting unless council formally waives the rules. Ordinance 15-270, approval of changes in the CP and Otter East parking lots. Ordinance 15-271, create bicycle lanes, lane reduction, road diet on Murdock Avenue from Wisconsin Street to Sheridan Street. And at this time, can we have Mr. Collins come forward and talk to this ordinance? And explain what a road diet is?
Sure, thank you. Basically, a road diet is a road reconfiguration. I don't know if I like the term road diet, but that's what some of the planners and engineers call it. But anyway, the reason for this is not to necessarily create bike lanes. I want to make it clear, it's about traffic safety, it's not about bike lanes. But the reason this came about is two of the, two of the high crack, intersections in the city with high crash frequencies are the intersections of Murdock and Elmwood Vinland and Murdock-Wisconsin Avenue. So the Transportation Department and Traffic Review Advisory Board have studied and reviewed alternatives and possible solutions to improve this, those two intersections for many years. The data revealed the majority of the accidents and the most severe accidents are involved vehicles turning left and being broadsided from vehicles going straight the other direction. At Murdock and Elmwood, there were 35 crashes between 2008 and 11. Seventeen, including all seven in 2011, involved vehicles turning left in front of a vehicle going straight in the opposite direction. In 2014, this last year, four of the nine accidents there were left turners getting hit by, through vehicles. At Murdock and Wisconsin, there were 38 crashes between 2008 and 2011. Nineteen of those involved left turners colliding with oncoming vehicles. In 2013, five of the 11 were left turners. Road reconfigurations with this are where, like this, are where a four lane road is reconfigured to a three, three lane road with a shared left turn lane. They've been used throughout the country to remedy this situation. The concept's supported by the Federal Highway Administration and the Wisconsin DOT. They, reconfiguring the road reduces three types of crashes. It reduces those broadside left turns, it reduces rear end crashes, and it reduces side swipes. Every instance where this has been implemented throughout the country, there has been a reduction in crashes after they've done the lane reconfiguration. In fact, a good local example is on Commercial Street in Nina. Just a little bit more data on Murdock. From 2008 to 2013, there were 169 crashes on Murdock between Algoma and Wisconsin. Fourteen of those were rear end, 11 were side swiped, 49 were left turn broadsides. Including those vehicles that directly matched the schematics, the link, reconfiguration could have prevented at least 47 of those crashes. So at a minimum, it would have presented, it would have prevented 27%. Nationally, the road reconfigurations have reduced crashes between 29 and 53%. On Commercial Street in Nina, which I had mentioned, they did the road reconfiguration 2013. The traffic volume there is very similar to Murdock Avenue. They're both around 10,000 vehicles a day on average. In Nina, they, in this last year, they saw crash reduction at their intersections between 50 and 100%. They also did one on South Green Bay Avenue in 2012, and accidents there decreased 41%. So if anyone's interested in a good local example, I encourage you to take a drive on Commercial Avenue in Nina and see what, what exactly this is about. So I'll just give you a real brief history on how we got to this point, though, because this has been in the works for a number of years. It actually predates when I started with the city. But a brief history is, the Traffic Review Board, like I mentioned, it discusses on it numerous occasions. In June 2012, they unanimously supported the road diet concept for Murdock Avenue. In September 2012, the concept was presented to the Plan Commission, which was supportive at the time. In February 2013, the Wisconsin DOT helped prepare a traffic forecast. In December 2013, the DOT was asked to help analyze the capacity along the corridor, including the intersections, and that's, I started shortly the following year. In January 2014, the DOT engineers came back and said the proposal had merit. They asked for a pavement marking plan and the plan to transition in and out of the roundabout. And then in mid-2014, after we provided them with a plan, they made a couple suggested tweaks and affirmed their support to proceed with the road reconfiguration. This current year, between January and March of 2015, the city's transportation planning and engineering departments met and fine tuned the pavement marking plan. In March 30th this year, we held a public meeting to present the plan. Some concern was expressed about some truck turning movements from Algoma onto Murdock, which we've addressed by only taking the, the reconfiguration to Sheridan. We had, the plan then was presented to the, at a workshop with the Traffic Review Advisory Board, the Common Council, the Plan Commission, and the Bike and Pet Committee, and that, and made. And there was a little bit of concern from, from expert turning, expert towing, they were concerned with tow trucks getting in and out of their business. But with, with the road reconfiguration, they'll be able to use the left, the shared left turn lane, and then if they need to use a little bit of the driving lane, they'll be able to. They were a little bit concerned about blocking traffic when they were hauling a semi. However, that doesn't happen real often, and I'm guessing that they probably block a little bit of traffic when that happens now, whereas the roads there are 24 hours a day and seven days a week. So that brings us today, to today, and I feel it's our responsibility and our responsibility to Transportation Department to do what we can to improve the safety at these intersections. So that's how, why we're bringing this proposal forward. It addresses the safety issues at both intersections with minimal costs. So I guess my question is, why, why wouldn't we do this? It reduces crashes, it also reduces speeds, and then an added benefit would be, it does provide for bike lanes, but I want to reiterate, that's not the reason for this. It allows for it, though. There'll be the five, five feet on each side of the road where there'll be pavement markings, so bikes will be allowed there. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for Mr. Collins while he's up there?
Yes, and my apologies, I did get your message last week, and I haven't had a chance to get back to you. I think my biggest concern is because I live on a street that's directly off of Murdock. There, I have a number of concerns. I think we're on the right track here, I'm just not 100% sold on this yet. The biggest thing I see on Murdock, which I'm from Wisconsin to Algoma, so I see constant ambulances, fire trucks, semi trucks, our big city vehicles that travel down there. I agree that there's an issue and there's something that needs to be done. I'm not sure that the road configuration, at least from Wisconsin to Algoma, is necessarily the solution. I think, I guess, you know, I may want to see some other options, only because of what I see, and I'm, I'm there all the time. So like I said, I, you know, I see a number of the hazards in going from four lanes down to three lanes. But that's, you know, we've got, it seems as if we've got a little bit of time, and you and I'll maybe have some time to discuss that.
Sure, yeah, I can just touch on a couple of things they've looked at in the past. One thing that I'll just put out there now, because it's come up frequently, is putting traffic signals at the intersection of Elmwood and Vinland and Murdock. I know the Traffic Review Advisory Board has looked at that numerous times in the past, and they've always recommended against it because it doesn't meet the warrants for traffic signals in the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is what all municipalities and states in the country use for traffic control. So it doesn't meet the capacity guidelines, there's just not enough traffic to justify a traffic signal, and the traffic signals cost between 110 and 125,000. So I'll just put that out there, because I know that's a suggestion that gets made pretty often.
And I, and I agree, and that's one that I've heard a lot. The challenge that I see specifically with that intersection there is because you have North High School not far from there, is there's kids that are traveling back and back and forth. There's nothing to get them across, whether it's four lanes, or whether it's two with like a, a middle lane or a third lane. I don't think there's, I don't, the numbers are one thing, but like I said, to actually, I live one street over from there. You've got the track team that's running, they're trying to, to cross, and it's not just the North students, there's other students as well that are constantly crossing that Murdock-Vinland Elmwood. So I don't, I don't know that we have an easy solution. I'm not, I'm not excited about the cost of lights, but I think at some point, we hear the crashes, we've heard just about all of them, we've seen them, I'm surprised we haven't had any casualties, so I think we need to be incredibly thoughtful about what we do before we actually make a decision.
Sure, no problem. If we can discuss that further, you know, you can just give me a call, but a couple things, though, as far as the crossing goes, this will actually help with children crossing the road, because they'll only have to cross two through lanes and then the shared left turn lane, and then there'll be five, five foot bike lane on each side, so there'll actually be less, less lanes of vehicular traffic for them to cross. And that is something we can look at potentially, is upgrading a pedestrian crossing there if that's something that's warranted. And I mean, a couple good examples are, like, we have these, the RRFB, the rectangular rapidly flashing beacons, like we did at Ninth and Minnesota, and there's one at South Park in Delaware. That's, that's a potential, if, you know, we think that's warranted, but I think with, with the conjunction of the loan, the road reconfiguration, that would be an option, too.
Are there any other questions of?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Collins, if the council didn't approve the road, the road diet, or the recommendation of the road changes, would we still go forward with putting, doing something with Murdock and Wisconsin, doing something with Vinland and Murdock differently? I mean, would we still be able to put in a left, designate a left turn lane, or would we be able to do, as mentioned, the stoplights, it's not budgeted, at the cost, I'd be concerned about spending that kind of money this year, but are there any other alternatives, like a Plan B, if we went to approve this at this point? Because right now, I'll be honest, I'm, I've gotten probably, well, three phone calls and four letters in the last couple of days, and only one is in favor of doing this. Their concern is even, is the volume of traffic, the ambulances, the fire department, that issue, and just getting in and out of their driveways. They're concerned about having to slow down in a bicycle lane, are they violating some ordinance, you know, statute there, and I think it's the unknown, as much as anything is, is concerning our citizens. So if, if we did vote down, are there any other alternatives to deal with the accident issues that you brought up?
Sure, I think I can answer a couple of those. The, the main benefit to this proposal is it addresses both intersections with pretty minimal costs. The alternatives, if we were to, say we put a traffic signal at Elmwood and Vinland, that wouldn't prevent the broadside left turn accidents, because we'd still have four lanes of traffic. You'd still, when you turn left, you'd still have cars coming in that curb lane, which is where the majority of the accidents occur. So that, that intersection's pretty tricky. I mean, I, like I said, we studied that intersection year after year after year, and this is, after years of research, this is the best proposal we came up with. The one at Wisconsin and Murdock, sure, there's the potential there that we could still implement left turn lanes where there isn't that offset, but in order to do that and make it effective, where we're still not going to have those broadside left turn accidents, we would still have to reduce merge lanes in that intersection, anyway. So I guess the alternatives would still involve somehow merging lanes, but that is a potential, and it, it's definitely merited at Wisconsin and Murdock. I'm not so sure that it would work well at Elmwood and Vinland. And Elmwood and Vinland, we'd have to put a traffic control device there in order to make it work. So to answer your question, we could probably solve part of it, but not all of it, but the residents coming in and out of their driveways, actually, what they found in most cases that I've studied is that it's actually easier, because now you're only getting into one lane of traffic. And the, the other thing you can do is if you live on one of the neighboring streets, is you can use that shared left turn lane as a merge lane to accelerate, to get into your through lane of traffic. I actually had the opportunity to attend a conference last week and talked with one of the people that came up with this concept. I was lucky enough that he was at this event, but he said that's perfectly acceptable to use that two-way left turn lane if you need to merge into traffic.
Just a follow-up question off of that. This is from Wisconsin going west, obviously on Murdock. Is there any discussion or concern in your department about the fact that we're going to be chopping this road up because when you go east of Jackson, it's four lanes, you go farther down past Main Street, it's four lanes, but then it cuts back down to two lanes? We're taking a major thoroughfare street, East West Street, and kind of hodgepodge in it with a road diet here, four lanes here. Concern that it confuses our citizens. We have another one-way streets that confuse our citizens. I guess this being a truck route to Jackson is a little bit of a concern. Am I, any discussion in your department about that concern?
Sure, yeah, we did, we did look at that, and I, I think it's a pretty clear transition, because what'll happen is, when you come out of the roundabout, then we'll, we'll actually merge into a left turn lane at Wisconsin. So we're doing that between the, between the roundabout and Wisconsin, so cars will get over if they're going to turn left into the left turn lane, and then they'll be in the straight lane, and then with the pavement markings, it'll be clear, we'll make it clear where you're going, and then we'll also make sure it's signed properly. It's, I guess, to answer your question, I mean, it's similar to, I mean, if you take a look at Commercial Avenue in Nina, it's a perfect example, they go, they do the same thing, it transitions from the different lanes, and it's, it's based on the capacity. I mean, we, we looked at from Jackson to Algoma is where our study area was, because that's where the two problem intersections were, so we didn't study east of Murdock. I'm not saying that couldn't, I mean, maybe there's potential to do it there, too, in the future.
And I'm sure in your discussions, you've probably talked to Chief Ronz or some of the battalion captains, any concern from the fire department whatsoever with the road diet?
No, they haven't expressed any.
Okay, thank you.
Just the last thing that I wanted to bring up, too, is I think, because there's Jacobson Auto that's at the end of Murdock there, and I will tell you, there's a number of times in which, you know, their, their vehicles come in, and that, that vehicle or that semi that brings in all of their vehicles, and it takes a significant amount of time for them to load, unload, and that clearly takes of time for them to load, unload. And that clearly takes up one whole lane right there on Murdoch. So has there been any discussions with Jacobsons?
Yes, there have. Actually, I can tell you, Ms. Jacobson came to our first public meeting, and she didn't express any concerns. She said, she actually saw the merit of the proposal. Really, her, her only concern was, well, if you do this when you paint the road, can you just let us know so our vehicles don't get splashed?
And one follow-up question. We, we've not heard any concerns or, or anything from the assisted care living facility on the corner of Vinland and?
No, I haven't.
Because that's a gated entrances to all three of their facilities. And I know that the US Foods or whatever truck, semi that is, does have to stick out in the roadway waiting for the gate to open, which takes about 10 seconds, so.
Some days.
Some days, if it even opens.
Yeah, they were notified for the public meetings, but I haven't heard anything from them.
All right. And I know we're not voting on it tonight, and I know there's citizens that I'd probably want to speak on, on this ordinance. So we can, if we have any further questions, we can bring them up at the next council meeting. Thank you. I don't have any more.
I know this was touched upon at the workshop a couple of weeks ago, but I was wondering if you could address the concern of what traffic flow and traffic buildup might look like going from two lanes shrinking down to the one, if there's going to be more traffic buildup on that lane?
No, actually, we, we, basically, we studied the level of service with the help of the DOT, which is basically how level of service works for roads. It's A, which is free flow and traffic, to F, which is total gridlock, total breakdown. And they found that Murdoch Avenue is in, in the A to B level, depending on which stretch you are with before. We would do a road reconfiguration, and they found that it wasn't, was unchanged after. The only time it gets a little, even below B, is for maybe just a little bit of time during the peak hour after school gets out. Then it's between a B and a C. But they found there was no change between now and after we did a road reconfiguration. And they did 30-year traffic projections. And that's something, too, that people have mentioned. They said, well, you know, the road was built with four lanes. How can it handle three? Well, it's, it's just a more efficient use of the space you have there. And, I mean, since 2005, up to 2005, the vehicular traffic in the country has increased about 2% a year. And since 2005, it's been pretty stagnant. Most of the research shows that the millennials and the younger generations are using alternative modes of transportation more. There's more people that are biking and walking and using transit. You know, I don't think we're, we're obviously not a major metropolitan city, so we're not seeing that as much as they are. But that is a trend that's out there. So that's another reason why a lot of roads can support a lane lesser more.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's a gentleman in the back who'd like to make some comments.
All right, Michael Fiedler, 1805 Sheridan Street, which is at the corner of Murdoch and Sheridan. And I think that three lanes should go because it's, excuse me, it'll slow the traffic down. Traffic flies down that road, 40, 45 miles an hour, 24:07, as you said. So I think it would help all the students out walking across the streets. And then that, that towing company, it would help them. I'm a truck driver. It'd help them turn into the corner to where they get into, excuse me, where they could get into the thing. I think it's all around a good idea, plus it'll slow the traffic down. I see all kinds of kids get really close to that road. I'm a disabled veteran, so I'm home all day, every day. I don't need, as far as the ambulances go, what you brought up there, Ms. I, how do you say your last name?
Allison Osby.
A.A.
Good enough.
Fire trucks and everything else can use a center lane to get past the vehicles that are pulled off, excuse me, that are pulled off to the side. So I feel that three-lane merger, instead of going to Sheridan and bringing it all the way down to Elgoma, might as well do it all. I don't like the traffic there. I just moved up here eight months ago, and that traffic's just horrendous at night. It's 40 miles an hour, or asphalted. You got a choice there.
Sir, can we have your name again, please? Your name again, please?
My name?
Yeah.
Michael Fiedler.
Thank you.
1805 Sheridan.
Thank you.
I moved up here in September.
Thank you.
I think it's all around safer that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service, sir.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. I, some of the comments I'm going to say and some of the stats of-
We need your addra- your name and address, please.
Yes, of course. My name is Benjamin Kraminar from 650 Grove Street here in Oshkosh. As I was saying, some of these comments are going to be heard and said, but I feel they're really important to say again because they do have merit behind them. I would like to take a moment to express my support for this proposed resolution. Oshkosh has constantly been working towards a goal of providing its residents safe, reliable, efficient transportation network. And this proposed lane reconfiguration in West Murdoch is that proposed safety, safer solution. Among the long list of benefits, decreasing the number of through lanes on a road corridor, increasing safety is definitely at the top of that list. A recent study completed by that Federal Highway Administration found that traffic collisions decreased nine, or 29% when a reduction from four to three lanes is, happened along those corridor studies. Compare that to Oshkosh and the Fox River Valley area. We've seen those benefits already. Commercial Street and South Green Bay Road, already mentioned today, both have seen a 50 and 41% reduction respectively. And even in here in town, we've seen recent trends showing that Sawyer Street is experiencing those decrease in traffic incidences. For those of you who weren't a part of the council in the past or just are now, as a reminder, Sawyer Street also went through one of those lane reductions on a portion of it. And we have seen history and trends that are showing a decrease in that traffic collisions. That's good. That means it's been safer. It's been more efficient. I'm also in support of this resolution because of the speed reduction benefits. A similar study completed by the federal DOT, not the Federal Highway Administration, founds that automobiles had a decrease in average of three to five miles per hour with one of these lane reductions or lane redesigns. So when you're talking about a pedestrian to automobile crash and a survivability rating, 50% of all incidences at 30 miles per hour are considered fatal. That's a crash with an automobile to a pedestrian. At 10, at 40 miles per hour, that survivability rating goes down to 10%. That means nine out of the 10 people hit by an automobile at 40 miles per hour is going to be, isn't going to be alive anymore. That three to five mile per hour decrease in speed because of the lane, that lane reduction can save lives. I'd like to leave you with just one final thought, and that's right design encourages right behavior. The road design as proposed, as proposed, will help to decrease speed in collisions and, most importantly, increase safety. With a proper design, traffic behavior will shift in that right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rolfe, this will be on the June 7th agenda for a vote.
The second Tuesday in June.
I'm sorry, June 9th.
9th, yeah. June 9th, first meeting. Yeah, that'll be the second reading on this ordinance.
Thank you. That takes us to ordinance 15-272. Adopt ordinance to prohibit fishing from city boat launch docks. The advisory park board recommends approval.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for consideration of an ordinance on first reading.
I will second that.
Reason I'm bringing it forward, we're into the season now. We've had, we had some more incidences over the weekend. I talked to Mr. Mallard, Park Director. We had another incident at Steiger Park. So I think where the Parks Advisory Board has approved it, we're having issues. I think council members all got emails from a citizen who's been involved with some issues at the Steiger Park launch. It makes sense to move it to the first reading.
I would agree.
If Mr. Herman didn't bring this, for our first reading, I was going to. We're getting into the season where these docks are going to be used more and more often, with Memorial Day being the unofficial launch to summer activities and nearing the end of school. I think it's important to get this in place to provide city staff as well as law enforcement an opportunity to promote the peace in our community.
Any public comment? We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 15-272 to prohibit fishing from city boats, boat launch docks.
Second.
Discussion? Public comment? City Clerk?
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Takes us to ordinance 15-273. Approve request to attach to the city, the town of Blackville, Portel voluntary attachment southeast corner of West Ripple Avenue and Oregon Street. Ordinance 15-274. Approve request to attach to the city from the town of Elgoma, Cypress Home voluntary attachment, south 30th corner block of West 20th Avenue. These two ordinances will appear on the agenda on June 9th for a vote. Takes us to new resolutions. Resolution 15-275. Annual, approve annual city licenses. These are for renewals.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Public comment? We have a motion and a second.
Do we have to make an amendment for Kodiak Jacks?
No.
No. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Okay. It takes us to resolution 15-276. Approve professional service agreement with Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation to complete aviation cluster study, $150,000. Mr. Davis, you're waiting in the wings.
Good evening. Just to remind the council where, where we are tonight, a few years ago, we purchased some land with Winnebago County for an aviation business park. Subsequent to that, the Department of Defense granted us some funds to do an aviation cluster study. And we've added more airports to that study, so it's a regional aviation cluster study. And we're looking at two different niches to make, to fill that aviation business park as well as the other regional airports, Fond du Lac, Audigamee County, and Austin Straubel. And at this point in time, GoEDC and Elizabeth Hartman are best positioned to carry that forward, finish the planning, and actually work on implementation, starting here at the end of 2015, going into 16 and 17.
Thank you. And this, this really ties with resolution 15-277.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Well, Mr. Davis is up here? Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a first and a second discussion.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. As you said, Mr. Davis, this is a partnership with Windville County and the city of Oshkosh. It's a cluster. What are we hoping to get out of it a little bit more? Can you go in a little more detail? What we're hoping to get out of it, and then what's next up that you're expecting council to be looking at?
The, the goal of the project is to find, identify the businesses that would fill the aviation business park, not only at Whitman, but the other airports in the region. So we're expecting more jobs, more tax base as part of this project. And we're looking at two aviation niches that seem to fit best in northeastern Wisconsin. One would be the maintenance, repair, and overhaul niche, and the other would be an additive manufacturing niche. They're somewhat complicated, and I'm not the best person to try to explain those to you, since I'm not an aviation expert. But those two niches seem to match the workforce, the EAA, the other improvements, the assets that we have in the northeastern Wisconsin region. So we want to concentrate our efforts in those two niches. And the planning section, portion of the project will end here in 2015 with a, a business plan, an economic development plan for those niches. And we're expecting additional funding from the Department of Defense to help implement recruitment and training, things of that nature, for businesses in the aviation business park and the other airports.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Comments from the audience?
Good evening, council. I'm here representing Jeremy Monet, yes, from 2150 Hickory Court. I'm here as a citizen of Oshkosh, as a tenant on the airport. My family's company is called Sonics Aircraft. And certainly as an advocate for the airport for years. Probably this is our fifth or sixth presentation related to airport stuff. And I must say, I'm an enthusiastic endorser of where this whole thing is headed. I believe that we finally, with the founding of GoEDC, with our new CEO, Jason White, in attendance here tonight, and our chairman of the board, Bill Wyman, I'm also on the executive committee of GoEDC, we finally have combined the efforts. We finally have a single source of product data, for those of you in, in, in programming, an area where we can all rally behind. We have a cohesive strategy. And right now, with this grant money that you just voted to accept and contract with GoEDC, or hopefully will, excuse me, we'll have the funding to do so. And it will be one piece of a, it's one piece of a very complex puzzle, which is why also Elizabeth Hartman was here tonight. We're kind of the support team for the city of Oshkosh to be able to answer just about any question you have about this. But it's in good hands. I just summarized about how much markup, a year and a half worth of discussion and Alan on, on the aviation stuff. And I think it's on the right path. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Takes us to resolution 15-277. Approve amendment to professional service agreement with Elizabeth, Elizabeth Hartman to develop a business and implementation plan and memorandum of understanding between airports and strategic partners for the aviation cluster study.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Just the question, Mr. Davis, maybe Ms. Hartman can answer. How, how are the, I mean, there's obviously collaboration developing. GoEDC's doing one part. Ms. Hartman's doing another part. How are they all kind of inter, interwining to get where we need to go to what Mr. Monet said?
GoEDC has staff available to do some pieces that I would characterize as more the organization, the, working with the existing marketing of the airports, the actual land. When it comes to Ms. Hartman's participation, to implement any of these long-term goals in the aviation clusters, we'll have to have agreements with the other airports, as well as businesses, as well as WEDC. Could be Fond du Lac County Economic Development Corporation. It could be Brown County. I'm not exactly sure who that's going to be. It could be New North. So we think we need to have that all planned out and have those agreements in, in hand when we, we finish this project so that we can go forward and everybody knows exactly what everybody's going to be doing, what they'll be responsible for, and what they'll be accountable for.
I'll just make an additional comment on that. Elizabeth Hartman, 432 Hazel Street. As far as the coordination between myself and GoEDC, you may recall, as the former CEO of Champco, you know, we basically relinquished our economic development responsibilities in favor of GoEDC. And I am a member of the Board of Directors of GoEDC. I was very involved in the founding and organization of it. So I'm in complete support. I'm very, you know, intertwined and ingrained with what GoEDC is doing. And the Champco Aviation Development Committee, which had basically charge of this project previously, that committee has transitioned to the GoEDC Aviation Development Committee, but it's the same people. So they're, they're really, this is really just a culmination of the transition of Champco leading this project to GoEDC leading the project. And I'm kind of the bridge between those two things, if you will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this is on Ms. Hartman's contract, but Mr. White's here. Do you want to say something on behalf of GoEDC concerning this project? And I guess you could say combined project?
This is the first time, I guess, I've had a chance to address you. But I do want to, from an overall perspective, want to thank you for your support of the org-
to, from an overall perspective, want to thank you for your support of the organization, and your belief in the organization, for certainly what it represents in terms of economic vitality in the greater Oshkosh area. The one thing I will say is, last year, long before I got here, there was an adoption of a strategic plan, and there were four clusters that were identified as important to this area. One was manufacturing, another one was information technologies, another was second-stage entrepreneurship, which your revolving loan fund is working to capitalize in partnership with our lenders. And the last one was aerospace aviation. So obviously, before I knew about Greater Oshkosh Economic Development, I knew about Oshkosh, and I knew about aerospace aviation in Oshkosh, because of all the people that come here every year with EAA air venture. So, you know, from a standpoint of capitalizing our assets, adding further balance into our local economy, creating opportunities for Oshkosh residents, and implementing our strategic plan, as we promised, this is a real opportunity, not only for our organization, but all of Oshkosh. So a real credit to everyone who really stepped up for the ORDD dollars when Oshkosh was going through, Oshkosh Corp. was going through some transition, and I think this is going to be a real good opportunity for all involved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I believe we have a motion and a second. The city clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution fifteen two seventy-eight, approved use of spheroid-style water tower for the replacement of the existing Marion Road water tower.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council, I think, is aware of, we've been going through a rather extensive public participation program to make some determinations about location and type of tower at the Marion Road site to replace the nineteen thirty-six tower that's existing. And we recently got approval from the, to use the site that we had been proposed to move to, and so the RDA did grant us that. And in the, in the process, in order for us to move further forward with it, we need to make a final determination on the type of tower that we're going to do. And in the discussions that we've had throughout, we really have fallen into two different varieties. One is called a composite style, and the other is a spheroid. And those are the two, representation of the two types of towers. And there wasn't a clear choice as to which one to choose, but the spheroid with the, in the public discussions seemed to stand out in a couple of regards. One of them is that it has pretty gentle lines, and the big thing is that the pedestal is the smallest diameter pedestal type of all the towers. So that's going to have the smallest impact on anyone that is behind it or around it as far as viewing goes. The cost of the two different styles are pretty much the same, and as mentioned in the memo, as far as the details of the design and things, we can, we can work on those, come up with some more ideas. Again, we're going to be going through Planning Commission to make sure we're meeting all the requirements that they set forth in that area, as far as requirements and, you know, special requirements and things about fencing and planting and things. We want it to be aesthetically pleasing, and as well as serve the community for possibly another seventy-five or eighty years for fire protection, which is its primary function.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Ryan, he's up here.
I have a question about which design of tower is going to most effectively conceal some of the cellphone equipment that may end up on such a tower. I know there's a lot of concern about the sightlines of, in this area, because it is right downtown, it is in a central portion of our city. To make it the most uniform look and look like it's supposed to be part of the community, rather than a finger sticking up for one purpose only, which of these towers gives the designers, the future design, more flexibility in terms of concealing extra equipment that may have to?
We can manage that with either one, and that was a discussion that we brought up, and we did have some, I don't have any of those with me. But there are ways for us to shield those cell antennas and things like that, mask them, essentially is a band that goes around and conceals them, it's the same color as the tower, so that we understand that that's a concern, aesthetic concern, and we're going to be able to work with that within the design, so that those won't be able to be seen.
Mr. Brand, I have a question. Maintenance, we approved some stuff on maintenance earlier tonight, dealing with, does this design make maintenance a much easier process for us?
It's really, the maintenance cost may be slightly lower on the composite, but it's not a material cost over the life of the tower. With these, when you paint, you have to paint the entire tower with a composite, you just have to maintain the structure of it, and then paint the upper portion. So really, the overall cost of either of these towers, long-term, is going to be very similar, there's not going to be a material difference between the two.
Okay. To Mr. Clark's question about cell towers or possible other things being put on there, do we have a, is that something that comes through your department, has to be approved? Or, and then eventually the council, or how do we go?
No, council approves cell tower.
Approves it, but I mean, do we kind of have, like, what can be put on, you know, as far as towers, what can't be put on? You know, we've had some of that discussion, other owned buildings throughout the city. Do we have any specifics dealing with our water towers in the city?
Well, again, if we, someone approaches us, we work with the attorney's office to work through a lease agreement, and those come forward. Again, we're sensitive to any design standards or any things that we're going to be putting on there. So, you know, if that's something in the future that the council wants to review, again, Planning Commission would be reviewing that, and I believe we'd be making a recommendation to council through Planning Commission. So I think that would be a good place for us to take those types of questions concerned, so they can address those first from their perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
In some cases, the landmarks commission would get involved.
Yeah.
I will add, just, it's not totally related to this issue, but there have been efforts at the state and national level to limit the ability of local government to regulate the types of things you've been asking about, which we've been very much opposing, because literally, if they can demonstrate that somehow in some analysis, it's cheaper for them to put up a pole, quite literally, next door to our tower, they will do that, even though from a, from an aesthetic standpoint, the community would be very much against that. So we're wrestling with that issue, we're working with various groups, I think the league has been keeping monitoring it, but it's out there. So I just wanted to, you gave me an opportunity to bring that issue up, because that's a, that's a concern we're going to have down the road, and if they were to propose something, we would certainly be against it, not because, yes, we do, we do make revenue off of it, but the reality is, is we're trying to keep it from overtaking the skyline, so to speak.
Okay, before we put it to a vote, I want to make sure everyone understands, especially those who may be listening to the meeting or watching it, that we'll be voting on the style only of the water tower, nothing to do with graphics.
Structural style is the term that, I think Mr. Godey told me, it's structural, the only thing you're approving is structural style. And if you have an opinion on spheroid versus composite, I think, I speak for the two Steves, whatever style you want is okay with them, they just want to get moving on one. Is that pretty fair to say?
It's very fair, yes.
So we, you know, spheroid, we figured was the least obtrusive, based on what we've seen, but we can take an alternate opinion.
I was a fan of the martini glass style. I'm just saying.
The door handle style, this looks like a door handle.
It looks like a gigantic door handle, but it's a new water tower.
Having recently driven around the state, when you do see these, these are the, I'd say, the cleanest looking. We do have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We do now. If we didn't before, we do now.
I thought we did. Discussion, any further discussion? The city clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
That takes us to council discussion, direction the city manager, and future agenda items. The first is a discussion with local state legislators on state budget and other issues, local concern, that will be June eighth at seven AM. We have to, that's what I'm looking.
Seven-thirty, we don't want to get better.
Seven-thirty AM.
I will report that Senator Gudek has confirmed for that date. I haven't gotten confirmation from Representative Henshaw, I'll do another follow-up. I think even if you get one legislator, I think it's worth it. So I would count on this and plan accordingly.
Do you have a location?
No, but I will let you know by Friday, now that, now that I've gotten Senator Gudek's confirmation. I didn't want to book a room unnecessarily, but we'll have a room that'll be probably off-site, just like the senior center or something like that, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
I believe next you want to talk about the health insurance program review.
Just a reminder that we have it at the next council meeting, we're going to start at four forty-five, because we figure we're going to need a full hour to go over those things, and Associated Financial Group, our new consultant, will be here to discuss some of their findings.
Next is mine, workshop with Sustainability Advisory Board on current projects. I had lunch with the chair of that board a couple of weeks ago, and she felt, and I was inclined to agree, that we don't know a whole lot of what they're doing. So we, I said, the best way is to sit down with a workshop and tell us what you're doing. So I don't know if you want to set a date now, or push it further into the summer?
What I would suggest for council is to, don't pick a date yet, because what we wanted to do at the next meeting was give you the schedule for budget workshops, and I know that those are very important. So if you want to fit it in between those meetings, let's get those, those budget workshops nailed down first, and then you can figure out where you want to fit in the SAB after that.
Are we doing a strategic plan workshop day also this summer?
No, that's next summer, we're on the, we do that even years, so we're good, we're good for this summer.
Because I don't want to tie up too many of our, you know, summer months, but for, I'm thinking earlier than later on the sustainability, I'm sure, because we'll be getting into budget mid-July and August.
Yes, we will.
Okay, then we have discussion on developing policy to make position on legislative issues. Councilman Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor Cummings. This is actually something, I guess, I would like to table to the next council meeting, because I think it does require all seven council members to have the discussion. I had asked to have this put on the agenda, only because we've, we've had certain situations where some things that we have been asked to take a stand on, and it isn't necessarily related directly to city council policy. My personal opinion is, at times, we're putting ourselves kind of on a slippery slope, and I think if we, I think sometimes if we, we need to pick and choose our battles, and what things that we want to, to take a stand on, and I think if we take a stand on every single issue, and if it's not directly related to us, our budget, and how we run the municipality, I see potential problems down the road. But I think in order to make a decision if we want to have a policy on this, in which we would direct staff to basically narrow down, what are we willing to take a position on, I think it, out of courtesy to Counselor Peck, who unexpectedly is not here this evening, we can, we can have the discussion now, or we can table it to the next council, where there's seven, seven members.
Thank you. Then there are two things I'd like to add.
If I could just, before we move on, off of that, I agree with Counselor Allison Osby on this a little bit. I know I've brought a couple resolutions forward, but I think there have been resolutions that are, I think, before they become a resolution, and I don't know the legality side of that, and maybe the city attorney can let us know, but I think that maybe we should be almost like saying, yes, we'll do, we'll support a resolution on this before it actually becomes a resolution. Have that kind of little bit of discussion, so that it kind of goes to her point that we kind of get backed into a corner on a resolution, where we can't really have a good dialogue and a good discussion, because it's already, like, it's there, it's in resolution format, and it would be voting it down, but yet, there might be some merits to not vote it down, but same time, so I'm thinking that not every event, activity, or when we get contacted, that it goes right to resolution, maybe there's that discussion before it turns into a resolution, and we've done that with a, kind of a couple. I know we worked with the chancellor at UWO on his, we've worked a little bit with the prison system on theirs, even though that got defeated, or it's moving forward in the budget to happen. But I think sometimes when we get resolutions from outside the city wanting support, that sometimes, is that really where we want to go with the city of Oshkosh? So I think it merits a good discussion.
Now, just two quick other things that I wish to talk about in the future is boards and commissions. Mr. Rollup and I talked this morning that we really have no policy as to people taking attendance. Some of these boards and commissions, it can cause problems when not, there's not enough or a quorum, so we better, we want to start looking at, how many times can you miss a meeting before you're asked to resign from that board or commission? And then the other is, this is the marketing guy in me, but the, our city logo, we seem to use in all sorts of different formats and so forth, that, just going to sit down and pull all of our uses together, come up with a common logo, here's how it's used in color, here's the specified color, and how it's used in black, white, and then move forward. But I brought in at least four or five different variations of how the logo is used, and you don't mess with logos.
And I have those examples, and I'll, I'll share those with staff.
Off of that is, is our, do we have a trademark on our logo, that it has to be a certain?
We do, we just trademarked it last year, I believe it was.
Yeah.
We renewed the trademark on it, but Mayor Cummings is correct, there are, I'm surprised you only found three or four, I think there's more than that, different versions of, off of that trademarked logo that are not currently trademarked.
And going forward to the little QTM, should always appear with it too, just as a way to protect it. Now, Ms. Pansky, you have something to say about the Oshkosh Public Library?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I stopped into the library, and I just want to remind everybody that their summer reading program started today. I signed up both of my kids for this program, it just facilitates reading throughout the summer, they have a whole list of activities through every, you know, every month over the summer break. You can sign up online for this, if you don't head into the library right away, or you can just go downstairs to the children's department, and they can help you out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to the second period of citizen statements to the council. Citizens are to address the council only, statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, and are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the council, and the common council, which we may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. I see no one who wants to come forward. Moves us to council member announcements and statements, that's me again. We have moved the Oshkosh, what has been called the mayor's breakfast, is now, we are calling it the Oshkosh Community Mayor's Breakfast, we have moved it to Saturday, August fifteen. That came on the recommendation of the people who have organized this program over the past ten, fifteen, and twenty years. I'm sort of the new kid on the block, and I took a recommendation, they felt that attendance was dropping, fewer and fewer and fewer people were coming from EAA, that we should really make it a community breakfast, very family kid-oriented, it would tie into then Farmer's Market, and I believe that weekend is Gus Macker?
Yes.
So it would, we would just have the entire downtown activities for everyone, so. Any council member who would like to pour coffee, please?
I may or may not have had some professional experience with pouring coffee.
We can train, it doesn't take much. If I can learn a computer, you can learn how to do coffee.
You can break me of my bad habits, right?
This thing is called, yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I am in full support of moving the date, I think it's a fabulous idea, and I'd like to see this be something that is really for to see this be something that is really for the community. However, I will not be here that day, as I filled out my registration and sent in my check for my first short course triathlon. I will try to make sure that I don't, you all don't have a vacant council seat after that. I'm not a strong swimmer.
We, thank you. Go with the tide, go with the flow. We're now at City Manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your agenda packet, it's actually under item 44, scrolls down after 44, 45 didn't show up, at least on my index, but it's there. A report from Ms. Larson for both, we're required by code to report to you vendors who received more than $300,000 in a given fiscal year. We didn't do the report last year, that was right after Ms. Larson had started, so she's doing both right away. You see the report that's in there. Most of those are major CIPs, big projects. You'll notice one, advantage purchasing, that's the, those are the supplies that we purchased directly for the Public Works Field Operations Facility project, that was to avoid having to pay the sales tax on that. So, those are the big ones that you'll see in there. Some of the other large ones, the two major consulting costs are CH2M Hill and AECOM, we use them a great deal for utilities, one of our close sessions happened to do with utilities, so you have an idea of where we spend some of our money on those things. Those are the major expenditures we have in those, that we spend more than $300,000. Happy to answer any questions that you may have on that. If not, we have also an agreement for sewer system flow monitoring services, that's part of our influence infiltration program, keep an idea, keep in track of where high flows are, and ADS is a company that, pretty much, that's their, that's the main thing they do. So, nationally recognized company that we've used over the last couple of years. And then finally, my commercial announcement, this Saturday at 9:00 AM until noon, we will be doing the open house in dedication for the field operations facility, dedication at 10 o'clock. Mayor will have Emily be getting hold of you later this week to kind of go through the little agenda. Very short agenda, if you can come, great. Right after the dedication, we're going to do some field demonstrations. Because of Memorial Day this week, we're actually going to be, some of our refuse and recycling crews are actually going to be working on Saturday, so stay out of the lanes when you're in the garage, we're actually going to be working on Saturday, so. But I, we encourage people to show up, we're doing some promotions to get people interested, and hope we'll have a crowd that will cheer you on as you cut the ribbon.
Is this a child-friendly event?
It is absolutely a child-friendly event, thank you for asking. We're not going as far as maybe quarry quest or anything like that, but we do want people to see that.
Anytime there are big vehicles involved, my kids are like, can I go?
They're absolutely dead-on invited, thank you for asking that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you. Now, Mr. Councilman Clark will read the motion to go into closed session in Deputy Mayor Peck's absence.
The motion reads, "The council may convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 parant I, parant G, to confer with legal counsel, who will give legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation which the city is involved pertaining to the wastewater treatment facility, WPDES, permit effective July 1, 2013, and to discuss bargaining options, strategy, and parameters related to the negotiation of an agreement with the Grand Opera House Foundation for lease and operation and/or acquisition of the Grand Opera House property located at 100 High Avenue pursuant to Section 19.85 parant I, parant E of the Wisconsin State statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session."
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? The City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stefanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
I now need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would we like to meet in our office?